...a custodian, you know, payment, you know, for their salary and for the wellness group. So that's not a huge amount of money and plus if it doesn't go to ten thousand with that money, like you say, rolls back over to the next year, if it does reach that ten thousand dollar marker, based on how many, what the damages were, like you say, one guy has a flat tire out of the one fire group, another guy, they might not have had any issues whatsoever out of another fire group at all, but you can disperse, you can, once it hits that ten thousand dollar marker at the end of the year, when those payments go out, you could maybe just say, you know, we don't make those, we don't compensate you till the end of that year. When that end of the year happens, it looks like you've reached that ten thousand dollar marker because of all the additional costs to you and say, we have had a bad year, we take that ten thousand dollars, we don't go over it, but we do percentage wise based on how much cost it's been to each individual group. So you might not get the full cost allocated to you, but based on the overall, just a thought, just using percentage.
You know what I'm asking for, if you're buying somebody who's got two thousand dollars left in store, let's use it up. We're asking for twenty percent of the answer.
Correct. I hear you.
So this is only when you're out of district for reimbursement, or is it only on unprotected lands?
I would say unprotected lands.
Out of district unprotected lands for structured protection.
That's the other thing with the confirmation, the state conflagration for coming to, pregnant from wrong stuff, but for coming to those protected areas, our fire department's overwhelmed, so we're calling the state to come protect the land. They will not build a conflagration for unprotected lands.
They, it causes a lot more discussion. They have responded to unprotected areas, but it's an untaxed area. So, and I don't know if the counties can bill those areas because they're not receiving tax, but they're receiving a service. So.
But if you look at our county and where the structures are at, anywhere we have a bunch of the structures are together, usually a fire district, they're providing.
Correct.
Well, like Scandor.
Perfect, perfect, just moving, right.
Are there trees unprotected? There's no.
Not protected.
Drews, Drews reservoir's unprotected, Drews Gap's unprotected, A-Dev, Flush.
There's a few, a few areas, and I guess when you look at those, I mean, if you get out in A-Dev and Flush, look at the fuels, your sagebrush or grass, it's going to be more of a short lived event. You really are looking at a very point. Okay, Watson Fire. That's. There's structural protection in unprotected lands and there's reimbursement that comes from. So you already have your committee put together or whatever?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yes. You're comfortable with that? You're comfortable with the commissioner setting on that?
Absolutely. I think I will do it where it breaks the gap and get it through.
You know, and our checks and balances, we kind of talked, is we're not going, you know, if our district X sees a smoke outside of their district and they need to take off, why, and then they try to submit a bill, why, that's where the fire defense board will come in and say, no. You know, if it's, say, we have a, you know, fire out in A-Dev and Flush area, the rangelands out there and they see structures threatened, that's where they would have to make the request to the county fire defense board to activate structure protection. And at that point, we would, you know, put together whatever was needed and head that way. But as far as getting reimbursed to fire district X, that bill has to be submitted to the fire defense board first to make sure it was a legit response and not a, you know, willy-nilly.
Just somebody that wanted to go out for the day.
Exactly.
I appreciate that so much. You guys have done a lot of work and those checks and balances is what will make it set up to be their successful enough, right there.
And we're all about helping people in our county and I will, for a district I've got in Shooks County, I will not go outside their district boundary regardless. They will not go out there neighbors. So there are some things to help them, but we all work well together and we're not helping each other and, you know, we want to get the job done. We're not trying to shut the government back to protect us who, who definitely hates us.
So, Mark, James, Oliva, do you have any interest in setting on this, or?
Well, you already worked on it.
Yeah, I mean, but if you're interested in.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You're already grown, wasn't it?
All right, I guess I've been nominated.
There you go. So, James will work with you guys to, they'll try to get something put together, I would think.
And I'll keep in touch with Jim Bailey on this process as well and forward information to him and make sure he's up to speed on all this.
Yep. So, get things into draft form. You guys already done a whole lot of work and everything. Appreciate that. We're adopting our budget tomorrow, so I don't necessarily see ten thousand dollars being put in there this year.
Correct.
You heard some budget discussion earlier, so, but that doesn't mean we have a, the ordinance in place and those other things, that part of it. Anything else, you guys? I guess I have to go back to, you have down here a county conflagration versus state conflagration. So there's protocol and it's process to ask for a state conflagration. So if we're going to jump over into that world, if we're going to say we have a county conflagration, I don't know what that really means.
I don't know either. I just took that word. I just.
And, and, I'm a little.
That's an official term. I think it's, you're just talking local, county strike team.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think conflagration is the right term.
No.
Yeah. We'll have to find another word, Dan. Sorry.
That was really just a talking point.
Okay, all right. I'm more comfortable than.
We got a talking point out of it.
Well, I think the last group, conflagration, was about two thousand and two on the winter fire. And it was a different process. I.
I talked about it last year and once, because I mean, it was kind of.
Yeah, we talked over it in the meeting and it's hard to get there today.
Yes, it is a challenge.
All right, so I don't have to worry about the county conflagration.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
I'll put that in my notes. We need to find another word.
Thank you guys very much. We're gonna move on. Our agenda. Benny, apologize. We had good discussion, kind of scrolled it over.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Our eleven o'clock at eleven thirty.
This is a couple of boxes of information and a letter response to the.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Davis says, uh. You have on your agenda for tomorrow, a public hearing?
Yes.
And the public hearing is to adopt a resolution reoperating the rural renewable energy zone, which is an energy development zone. This first piece of paper is basically the summary of what that zone does. It provides for an incentive to encourage investments in wind, solar, geothermal biomass, or other forms of energy that generate electricity, or the production, distribution, and storage of biofuel, biofuels itself. This zone is a ten-year designation. We have had, read zones in place for the past ten years, and this is renewable of that zone. At this point in time, you do not have anyone that is actually using that enterprise zone benefit, because the second piece of information I have there is the fee in lieu of poverty taxes, which is the agreement between the county and a solar project to have that. Instead of paying poverty tax, they agree to pay, at this point in time, seven thousand dollars per megawatt of the project's nameplate capacity. And that is the choice of most solar companies at this point in time. It is a, it was legislation that was put in place after the renewable energy zone was put in place, and that one is what most solar projects have opted to use, which means that you do get a certain amount of revenue on a, but it is a, it's not dependent on the company having to go out and have an assessed value done yearly. It is on the actual ability or the amount of electricity that they are generating that they are paying upon. I also included the information because I know you have a project in North County that has been looking at a strategic investment program, which is a very large project, and it is a different type of incentive that is available to those types of projects. I'm more than happy to talk about the enterprise zone, the questions you have, but primarily what your resolution, what has been required, is that I notify all the taxing districts, and that letter was mailed out, actually, four weeks ago, to let them know that this is being considered because it does impact the collection of taxes for those taxing districts if a project is approved. You received one response from the library, which basically is a favorable response, but encouraging that you use the minimum amount of incentive. There's a three, three-year is kind of the basics. And, you know, they're encouraging because they do see the benefit that this does bring to the county in increased revenues overall. So questions on the enterprise zone specifically to the red zone, or any other questions I'd care to answer that and to make sure you understand what the resolution will be for me.
I have none. I don't have any right now.
Yeah, I, did you, I got the letter from Amy Hutchinson and her support letter, and I really appreciated the opportunity to read that. I don't really have any questions, just.
I, I don't, I was half expecting the fire chiefs who all received that letter to, if they had comments, that they would have stayed. So apparently there's, I'm sitting here with a whole room full of fire chiefs.
I think we went a lot longer than they had anticipated, so I hope you're ready to.
Fire districts are, are usually, do have something to say about enterprise zones because of the, you know, that is their tax basis, you know, and you understand that also. But I think that this, having this in place is, continues, allows Lake County to encourage the renewable energy projects that you have, and you have the benefit of them. So. Other than that, I do not plan to be here for your resi, for your public hearing tomorrow, but I can be available by phone if you have anything.
That should be sufficient.
Okay, excellent. All right.
And so we only have to do the one public hearing when we close it.
Once, once that is, once that is closed, you prove the resolution itself. If I can get a signed copy of that resolution, I will then provide, send it to the state along with the evidence that the meeting was, I did put it in the newspaper, so that, that does also.
Perfect, excellent.
Yes.
Thank you for.
It's been, it's been an interesting night. I always enjoy actually hearing, overhearing some of the good comments and stuff on the fires, because it does, well, come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Ronnie Lindsay on our agenda, you're next.
Oh, wow.
Good to meet you.
I was.
Judy, I don't know what she's telling you.
Well, I wasn't, but I just unloaded all the fireworks, so I got here.
How are you gonna pay for those?
I don't know. So, and I kind of feel bad now that all this fire stuff has happened. It seems like it's so much more important. So, 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 standardly, every year, the county has been wonderful and gives them five hundred dollars for the fairgrounds, five hundred dollars towards fireworks, for fireworks celebration.
So what we've done in the past, to clarify that, for the fairgrounds and for Northlake, we gave five hundred dollars for Fourth of July celebration.
Right.
And they use that for whatever they want. If they want to go towards fireworks, they can, or just put a celebration together. And we usually take that money out of the economic development video lottery fund and give it to them. So you're here to request it.
So with that clarified, I am, I got a call or a text last Tuesday morning from Fire Chief Dennis. Anyway, and usually they do the fill the boot, and the fill the boot, they always have, or for a long time, have donated towards the fireworks. But this year they're having engine problems and stuff like that, so they decided they want to do their own fundraiser and not do fill the boot, which makes perfect sense. However, that's like two-thirds of my fireworks budget. And so I'm kind of scrambling. And so I talked to the town. The town is giving me a thousand dollars. I was just wondering if you guys would want to help your five hundred, by any amount. I'm not even picking a thousand.
Might have been nice to know about that a little sooner in the year.
Well, it would have been, but, but, you know, they didn't have all their problems happening sooner in the year, so they just kind of, and I understand them, they need to do their own fundraiser.
So myself, I definitely would not want to do any less than what the town does.
I did go to that in there, didn't I?
I want to see a receipt from the town.
No, they, they have, they have given me a thousand dollars, well, since I've been here anyway, for the last three years. And I think that was standard before that.
So what I would support and everything is if we did up it to the thousand, would be that same amount, would go to Northlake Chamber for their Fourth of July celebration also.
So that'd be.
Way full thousand.
Yeah.
And Melanie can talk about our fund, but I just looked at it, and our fund is doing fine, our video lottery fund, but the cost would be fine. It's allowable by its economic development for, and all that stuff. And this is the only fund that we as the board have the discretion to be able to use for economic development type things.
So Northlake would be the same.
Well, that, that's what, it's a new board, but that's what we're always expecting, is keeping the same.
I can give you a little update on what we're doing.
That would be, that would be actually good. I know, but this board probably doesn't.
So this year, we're doing bowls and broncs and mini bowls and broncs, and mini bowls and broncs haven't been here before, type of fun thing. And we're having two food vendors and a, I always call it a mine or beer garden, because it's just beer and wine. It's not the whole bar setup. And we're having two vendors and besides all the lawn, waterworks and bounce houses and everything during the day. So I think it'll be really good.
Happen on Fourth of July, is it?
Yeah, everything is on Thursday, Fourth of July.
Very good. So we'll carry this forward tomorrow for it to safety.
Okay, thank you. And then the one little reminder, again, update, if you haven't been, is we hired somebody.
Oh.
So, yeah, I'm so excited. We start this next Monday.
His name?
Huh?
Can we get a name?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's Nicholas Wilkins. He works, he's currently working at Hall. But a little green, but his two major wonderful points were, he moved here to live here and raise his family here, longevity, that's awesome. And then he was at Hall's, his reference was, he picks up things really quick and did everything with a smile. So that was awesome. And he's real excited. He even came out to see the housing and was excited about the housing. So I'm excited to be there Monday.
Very good.
So that's it. Thank you, you guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go.
Yes.
Go on, hey, you're good. Rachel.
Hi. My shirts, my, my shirts.
You're really packing proud.
I know, I know how to do it. So, just two quick items. Do you guys have the summary reports for a moment?
Yes, we do.
Oh, great. Okay, so the first one is the contract between, or in criminal justice commission in Lake County. When we wrote the budget for the drug court, the 2017, 19, we overestimated personnel costs. So at this point, we're under spent by ninety-four hundred dollars. We can't carry that cost over, and there's no way to spend it with the amount of time left. So we're just asking that the new amended agreement be approved and be issued ninety-four hundred dollars less.
This is the second time we've done this.
Yeah, and I think we're just, it's still new, so we're not.
Yeah, that's.
So I guess I'm retarded over. So. And, do you guys have any questions on that?
I do not. I very much appreciate the narrative that comes on the, our sheet and everything, the narrative.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate that very much.
Good. Good, good. Okay, so moving on to the second item would be the IGA between Oregon, Work, Police, and Supervision in Lake County. And with that, on the adult side, Jake and I are certified hearings officers, so we conduct all the parole violations hearings at the North County Jail, instead of having to have the actual full board do those, conduct those hearings. So we get compensated for doing those hearings, and for the 19, 21 by any, there, we receive seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. So in order for us to continue to do those hearings, we just need to enter into this agreement.
Very good. So this will be the agreement for the, is it for the by any, Mark, or?
Yeah.
I did it for the by any.
Yeah.
I'm trying to read here and talk and say.
Yeah.
These are actually dollars that are coming into Lake County.
Yeah, they're coming into Lake County.
That's ours.
The two are by any.
Very good.
Any questions, other questions?
No, actually, it's pretty straightforward.
That doesn't seem like it's going to be enough for you guys to.
I know, it's a lot more than that, Mark, but.
I know.
What the board says, or all that's all they're willing to give me.
I bet they'd want more than that, though, if they had to drive all the way down.
Exactly, yeah. That would be one of the reasons.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it sounds good. Just make sure that you let me know what we think about that. We don't think it's enough.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, times easy.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Well, jumping back up to the agenda, Judy Clark, OHA agreement, that was 1598, 18.
It's right here?
Yep. That is public health, by any agreement.
I can jump on this really quick if you want. I mean, it's pretty much straightforward, kind of similar to the last one that we did for mental health, just an update on contract. And the dates in this one were correct, though.
Okay.
For the 2019, 2021 by any.
Perfect. Questions, sir Judy?
Nope.
All right. Department updates? I don't know, we have any department updates?
Unless you have an apartment recently, you'd know.
No, I was just hanging out for Dave Berman with the county airport thing. Is that gonna happen?
Oh, he finished.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, that's at two o'clock.
Yeah, we brought him in real quickly. You may have stepped out with some of the others, and we brought him in and we finished up.
Any questions or?
The only question that I had to share into this first, going from Forest Service to BLM, did we have to do anything with that previous contract by mutually agreeing that that one dissolved, or was it timed out? I don't know.
It timed out.
It timed out.
It times out June 30th of this year.
Okay.
It's a twenty-year agreement.
Excellent. So to answer that question, tomorrow we'll act on that.
Yeah.
We don't see any issues. We push, push it up to five percent instead of two percent after you guys would agree to that.
That's out of my hands.
Darn it. You might be a gambler, because you wasn't going to take that gamble.
No, I saw that coming.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no, no. Hey, thanks so much.
Thank you. Liaison updates, I mean liaison updates. Just, we're gonna be heading up to County College on Friday. I am going to be out of town Thursday for EOCC board meeting in Burns. You know, around the Burns for that. It's probably the closest they'll have those meetings for quite a while, so make it fairly easy for that one. That's not really on the way to say.
No, it's not. It is perfectly fine with me, so.
It's a big one.
Yeah, it is.
I got a DVD, one more from Sir Judy.
Okay.
One minute. Lake House, Forest House.
Okay, I think it's, it's, is that with George Jennings?
Well, he goes to.
He goes to go.
Okay.
All right. And then tomorrow, I will, I wanted to let you guys know, I'm still waiting to hear back from Tom Work. Tom Work wanted to do a ride along tomorrow, interesting valley for most of the day, so I may not even be able to be here for tomorrow's meeting. I may call him if that is all right with everyone. Call in tomorrow's meeting here. I'll be on a ride along, most likely with Tom Work. I'll just call in for the meeting. So, yeah, it sounds like there's some interesting stuff going on, so we're, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be able to call in. You never know. So we'll just see where that goes. But, anyway, I'll just spend some time out there with Tom and Rachel and Jason. So, okay, that, that's the only update, too, that I have. Want to point out, tomorrow, though.
We're in Corvallis, too.
We're in Corvallis.
I'm not gonna say, I think it's, you know, calls me.
Why?
Thanks for that.
So Friday, I will be traveling with hopefully other paribor members, hopefully from Town of the Day, going to Kirk County. The director's going, we're going to go over into the process of that grant being looked at for the facilities out there. I want to go through the fairgrounds. I don't know how many paribor members are going to go or not. Try to, everybody has an idea, but nobody has a solution, probably, you know. So just trying to get more educated, look at the different programs, as the compacting of the, and post the different things, we might be able to put some very positive input on that. So Friday, I will be able to leave here at seven in the morning, be back that afternoon. I've been asked to sit on, from the Oregon Transportation Commission, to sit on, not an interview panel, but a question panel to the finalists for the ODOT director for ODOT. And that will happen this, well, it's August, I believe it's, well, I may be wrong, I didn't create, first part of August, middle of August, I guess. So that, hopefully that, whoever it is, start building relationship there for, for outside of the world. With that, it's been busy, the fairgrounds out there, you know, with, with an employee resigning, moving on. So, it's pretty tough out there. There's a lot of things down there, this director. Nobody's here really here but a compliment to Buddy and us and our community service people. I love to see them doing things that really benefit the public. They're doing an excellent job out there. So if you see Jake, see Buddy, tell them thank you.
I haven't been out there any of the time.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's plenty to do. Don't look too close, but there, if you drive by and see some of the things that that crew is doing, Buddy, just make sure that the supervisor and rest of their team know, that's appreciated.
Well, that reminds me, you being on the ODOT deal. So July 1st and 2nd, I'm on the hiring board for Willie Riggs's job. And they're, they narrowed it down to two candidates, and then that's the final two. Jamie Davis is one of the last ones, and a guy from our.
And that's for Willie's.
Willie Riggs.
Somebody that represents rural communities, pro ag, pro cattle, pro sheep, pro chicken and everything, forest, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. So, I'm glad you're on the ODOT deal.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been very fortunate to be able to build those relationships, so. Guess I have to see Mr. Garrett, I mean.
He's exceptional, exceptional. So for tomorrow, is there anything on the agenda for tomorrow? So, for tomorrow, um, is there anything on the agenda for tomorrow that, um, need any further discussion or anything?
No, I don't think so, I just want to remind everyone, Amy will be here from the police office today, I don't know, I think she's gonna be here around three.
I'm, I'm the last one she's gonna talk to, I, she's four o'clock for me, she's got one and you two at three.
Me at three.
You at three, I'm three thirty, and then you.
Four?
Yeah.
At least, at least I know my time, my thing.
I've stapled it on your outlooks?
Yeah, yeah, it's on your outlook, yeah, Ronnie's been sending it, yeah. Um, one other thing, just want to, just make sure everyone knows that tomorrow is going to be Garrett's last day. Uh, he is leaving, and he's got a new job, and he's headed back to Ohio, so.
Yeah.
Um, just want to thank you, Garrett, for always being here, so, yeah, appreciate it.
And we need a full, full disclosure update of his Vegas trip?
Have the off camera? That's all right.
What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas.
Yeah.
On YouTube.
So, anyway, just thank you, Garrett, and good luck.
Thank you for acknowledging that, I was gonna consider that tomorrow, you might not be here tomorrow.
I may not be here, so I wanted to just bring that up now, so.
So you're hearing it from all of us, thank you, Garrett.
You'll probably hear it again tomorrow, too, so.
Great. I'll probably hear it tomorrow, but, all right, all right, uh, we'll adjourn in five minutes.